I'm gonna call the meeting to order. It is six thirty-five. This is the Mashpee School Committee Business Meeting of October fourth. First item, I'm going to ask our hosts, Chairman Pramal to lead us in a prayer. So I want you to please stand.
All right, so first of all, welcome to our building. And I'm sure when we start meetings, we have open prayer. And so if you could somewhat hold hands, it's a medicine that you share and exchange, and it's good medicine about a good time. And so I'm gonna look to our Vice Chair, Jesse Littledo, to give us that opening prayer.
And we especially thank you for this historic day where we come together as a community in the best interest of all of our children collectively. And we ask you to help us to say and do those things that are just and proper. Anach.
If you would remain standing, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the Lord, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, next item of business is Public Comment. And we do have Phyllis Brown who has signed up. I guess if you would come up to the table, please.
Good evening Superintendent DeBoer, members of the school committee. I'm coming here for something very brief. Several months ago, I left a paper with you that had corrections to our history textbook that had been approved by the publisher Pearson. And I'm just coming for an update on the status of where these corrections are and if anything whatsoever has been done.
All right.
That's it.
Thank you. And I know that the superintendent has looked into that and separately can provide you with all the details.
Okay, I left my email address. Thank you.
Can I just add one thing? So Phyllis, I did send you an email today. Our department head at the Mashpee Middle High School did research in August. And I guess I didn't realize that we were sharing back with you. We were investigating it. So you should've got the email today if it went the right place, otherwise we'll get it too.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments if you didn't get a chance to sign up? Seeing then, we'll go on to next item of business, which is the Student Advisory Council. We have Celia Crifter who is filling in for Mr. Hannah. So, Celia, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Celia Crifter. I'm a senior at Mashpee High School, if you don't know. It's an honor to be here at the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribal Council tonight. And on behalf of the students, I'd like to thank the entire school committee for always ensuring quality education at Mashpee High School and all of the Mashpee schools. The entire student body is very appreciative of all that you do. We can't believe it's already October, that September has come and gone. We've had a great start to the school year so far. Classes are in full swing. Fall sports are also in full swing. The fields are busy with games and practice. Homecoming and Spirit Week in the high school have already come and gone. As a senior, it's also the busy season with college applications and that whole process. And in the coming months, I'm sure you'll see a lot of senior projects rolling out to help the community and the school that a lot of our seniors participate in and create. The school clubs are up and running about this time of the year. They're all very community service-based and show a lot of high student interest. And at the high school, we're also very pleased to welcome new staff, especially our new Dean of Students, Pat Dillon. So we're very excited to have him there. We had a wonderful open house last Thursday with over three hundred parents attending. They loved seeing what goes on in our fabulous classrooms rooms. And that open house was preceded by a coffeehouse that benefited hurricane victims. The coffeehouse was put on by the Triumph Music Honor Society and the Key Club. From what we've heard, the seventh graders have acclimated pretty well to our big school. And the seventh graders, as well as all the students in the school, love our new homeroom policy. They've, we really love it. It's great to have a home base where we can start our day, eat our breakfast, listen to the announcements, and just sort of have a calm start to the day of learning. Coming up in the next couple of months, the events we have is the Fall Play, which is Little Women. That goes up in early December. The National Honor Society is running a blood drive through Cape Cod Healthcare. That's coming up as well. And in December, we have some coat drives. So yes, that's all I have for you tonight. Again, thank you for allowing students to have a voice here at your committee meeting. It means a lot to our entire student body. Thank you. Have a wonderful evening.
Thanks.
Can I add one acknowledgement of Celia? It's in the principal's report, but Celia was named a semifinalist through the National Merit Scholarship Program, so congratulations to her.
All right, thank you. You can stay early. We're always glad that students go.
She has hip hop. Thank you very much. Thanks.
I think we'll have to tell Mr. Hannah that he's got some serious comments.
I want them both to come.
All right, moving forward then, next item is Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe and Mashpee Public Schools Partnership. I want to thank on behalf of the school committee, tribal chairman, Mr. Pramal, and all of his staff. Been a fantastic opportunity to come into really your house and get a tour of it. And you've got really great facilities and, you know, so great people, great facilities. And it's an honor to be able to come and hold one of our meetings here. And we are looking forward to hearing more about, you know, the heritage and the culture and the history through all of ours. We did bring some T-shirts and some mugs from what we have at the school.
Three XL.
You can exchange for if the size is not right. We have more.
They're the ones that they ordered for me, those extra, extra, extra. But, you know, thank you for inviting us. And we look forward to building a stronger relationship and partnership with you and everybody. Collaboration, that listening, that understanding that unfortunately we need to do throughout the world. And so this is our step, or part of our step towards doing that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Next, I have on here, do you have any words?
Sure.
Mr. Pramal?
Chairman Meyer, School Committee and Tribal Council and community at large. This is a historical moment, you know. When we key in the word unity, this is a step in the right direction towards unity. We see how the world is going today, the shootings in Las Vegas, unfortunate that people got hurt. But at the end of the day, it's what people, what make the world go around. And we wanna make it go around in a positive way. And this is an opportunity of making it go around in a positive way. Education is such a foundational piece in growth and development of our youth. As we've seen, many tribal members have come through the school system and, you know, the history of our tribe, as you've talked about, mentioned, we've been here forever. Or Massachusetts would say fava. You know, it's important that we continue to grow and live together in harmony. And I think the educational opportunity is so pragmatic, but yet iterative in the sense where we can contribute to what that experience is. And this is definitely an opportunity of contributing to what that experience is. So I'm really excited and pleased to know that the meeting was gonna happen, to understand that it was gonna happen, then it is happening. You know, our youngest council member here, you know, be excited about it. Your youngest. And we're excited about it, really are. So thank you, and we appreciate it.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is presentation by Vice Chairman Jesse Littledo related to a historical sketch that I know she's labored on intensely. And I wanna make sure that everyone got a copy of this. If not, I do have.
We brought it. Can we pass some around the table to Vice Chairman?
Sure.
I'd like to recognize Superintendent Patricia DeBoer.
Thank you.
Thank you for your leadership and all the principals and assistant principals that are here. Thank you.
So as this is getting handed around, I wanna start out by thanking you for coming. I'd like to extend a special thank you to Nicole and Trish for making this meeting happen. And what you have in front of you is a result of a request from Nicole, actually. We had a meeting here with Noah some months ago, and that's when I first met Nicole. And I talked a little bit about the history of Mashpee in the region. And she said, hey, you know, I think this would be great if we could have something for the school district. And so I said, okay, well, I can give you what we have here. So what we have here is really something very brief that the tribe will use when somebody says, and actually, we are using it in some contexts already, do you have a little something to hand out when people come in the building, they wanna know a little bit about the Mashpee Wampanoag? So this is just, just really a brief sketch, but it's not really history. And contained in here, you have a little bit about us and the wider Wampanoag Nation. There's a territorial and linguistic map. So there's a little bit about the language in here. There's a little bit about Wampanoag philosophy and approach to life. There's a section on traditional homes, if somebody's interested about how homes were built, family structure, traditional government for the Wampanoag Nation as a whole. And then the first arrivals, our relationship with the colonists when they first came here. And then the events around that relationship that led up to the King Philip's War. And then we start to talk about the tribe's steed lands to Mashpee and what that means in a wider context. And the tribe struggles to retain self-governance and sort of the different mutations of government that we've gone through as a people. And a little bit about our history here in the land of Mashpee and governance here in Mashpee. A lot of people don't even know that. Until 1967, we never had a non-Wampanoag person hold any seat in this town. People don't really know that. There's a little bit about the federal recognition process here. And in the last section, we talk about government today. And we finish up with, on the last page, the back page, is the preamble to the Constitution, and so what the goals and aims of the government are here today. So this is a little bit about our recognition process, a little bit about land claims and that history, a little bit about homes, a little bit about language, et cetera. So as I said, we're going to be using this just sort of, somebody comes in the door and says, I never heard of Mashpee Wampanoag, you know, this is great. So this is a little something for them. If the school district would like to use it or portions of it in your history classes or in general, I'm sure we would welcome that and we'd be fine with that. And I also wanna say that I think it's very important, as you said, Chairman, for us to work on having conversations and having a better understanding of both communities because none of us lives in a vacuum. And as Chairman said, you know, we live together really as a human community here in town. And we need to move forward in our humanity and educate one another and support one another and our kids because they're going to be taking care of the place pretty soon, kids will. So that's how we got to this document here and our willingness to share it.
Thank you. And I apologize if I was remiss in not recognizing the hard work that RBA's on to the tribe and Nicole, by the way, did to help arrange this.
It's the easiest work I've done to date.
And foster this. We recognized last year that we really didn't have.
Much to offer.
Well, we didn't have a real relationship as a school district with the tribe and the tribal government. And so we started trying to build that. And then Nicole was able, working with you, to get it to where we are today.
And Trish, where's Trish? Trish worked really hard organizing this.
All the hard work that you did to put this together.
It's that Hawaii connection, you know.
That's right.
Does anyone have any specific questions at this point? If not, I will ask Superintendent DeBoer.
Natana. On the agenda is Natana.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Unless you were wanting me to.
No.
We almost forgot Natana.
I'm skipping over this. So next item is Natana Gurdoo, who is the Educational Director. It's me talking about the language course and some of the things that are currently being done, which are shooting about to launch bunch, et cetera. So I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you. So again, I also wanna thank Nicole and Trish for setting this up. And I also just wanted to say that I'm really happy that this is happening, especially because I'm a product of Mashpee schools, I felt. I went through K through eight. I'm the youngest of the old people who didn't get to go to Mashpee High School. I was the last class that would've gone to Falmouth. But I think, so I think this is, it's long overdue. I mean, with all of our, you know, tribal people have gone through Mashpee schools forever. So it's just really great to all be in the same room together for this. So I wanted to talk about some collaborations that we've been working on together in my, in my experience as Education Director, as well as when I was working in language. And then I have also some ideas about, you know, moving forward and collaborating more as well. So first of all, some of the things that we have done in the past and that have been ongoing, lunch bunches that are provided through Indian Education, but with the staffing of the Language Department here. They have been, I think in the past, front at the Coombs School, but I believe this year they're gonna be at the Cooms and Quashnet School. So that's an opportunity for tribal students to come together at lunchtime, sing songs in the language, you know, learn vocabulary, as well as various, you know, aspects of culture. So I know that's something that kids really look forward to and enjoy. And I believe that's starting up, if not this week, next week. So that's exciting. Other thing, the, actually, I have to speak about the language class also right now, since we're up out of. So another thing that's new this year is in the high school, we are offering a Wampanoag language class for language credit this year. And the credit is offered at high school. We're working towards getting that to be, you know, a recognized language credit at the college level. But it is being taught primarily by Melanie Roderick, but also by myself. And it's not solely a language class, it's also Wampanoag history class, history of the language. But I think even more than just those things, I think it's been a really great way so far in the last month for the students who are involved, and there are seven students, all who happened to be Wampanoag, who did have one student who wasn't at first, but I think she may have dropped the class, or, well, she did drop the class. But it's been, I think, a really great way for those students who are involved to feel like their language and culture are important in the school. So it's been very positive. I know for Melanie and I, and I think for the students as well. Other ways that we've been able to collaborate in the past, we were part of the Superintendent Hiring Committee, or I, well, I was as representative, but, you know, as a representation of the tribe. Done some professional developments in the past. And one of the other ways that we've been working on for a long time, but in this past year is finally began to be fruitful, is with data sharing. And data is something that we really lack because of our students are so spread out. But to be able to have a concentration of students where, you know, we can look at, you know, how are our students performing on the SAT, for example, and, you know, and there's a group that we can extrapolate some data from, that's really, really helpful. And this has been the first year where we've been, we've gotten what we've needed for grant reporting and, you know, we can start to collect data to be able to work towards more grants and more opportunities as well. So some future collaborations that I know I would like to see, and I think I'm not alone in that, one is more professional developments. I would love it if we could be interacting with teachers on a regular basis. And not just from the Education Department, from our Historic Preservation Department, or our ICA Department, or our Health and Human Services Departments, whatever, you know, need the school may see. And, you know, whatever we feel is information that we need to be able to share about the students, whether it's history or cultural sensitivity or, you know, all-school presentations, things like that. Another, another thing that I think would be really important is just kind of a shared presence between the representation of the tribe being at school events and vice versa. So like Nicole, for example, was at our summer camp as part of the preserving our homelands, you know, those kinds of things that where we can, so the kids can start to know that we are all united in, you know, the effort towards their education. I think that's really important, you know, whether it's a college fair that we can have a table at, or, you know, it's a social that, you know, may not necessarily be educationally, you know, driven, but, you know, having teachers or, you know, faculty there would be really fantastic. So I think, I think that's it.
Thank you.
Could I, I just wanted to make one comment. I don't, I'm not sure if everybody understands the significance of this class right now in the high school. And while Mashpee Wampanoag and all Wampanoag people were the first American Indian people to employ an alphabetic writing system, our language was actually outlawed in the 1800s. And people living in Mashpee were not allowed to offer Mashpee language in Mashpee. They could be fined or jailed. And this is the first time that language is being offered in an educational setting in Mashpee in probably two hundred years. And for children that are Wampanoag to see a reflection of themselves at that level in their local school system really is extremely important. And I want to thank the superintendent and the whole school district because without your blessing, and you're allowing us to use the space in the Indian Ed Room and allowing us to send in the teachers and the curriculum, it still would not be happening today. And I think it is going to give us, it's gonna give our children something that none of us can take back from them and none of us could pay for. It's gonna give them something really invaluable. And hopefully, there'll be a time when, maybe it's not just our children in that class, and we can foster a greater understanding beyond just language. And the fact that children learning a second language, a heritage language, are scoring thirty percent higher on standardized tests is giving those children another tool in that class. So I truly don't think, if you didn't understand how important this is, it's extremely important. This is a model that a lot of the country is looking to turn to. So much of the country will be looking at what's happening in Mashpee today with this class. And it's extremely important. And I wanna thank everybody in this community that's had a hand in this, from the Tribal Council to the school district, to the superintendent, to the teachers, and the parents that are trusting us with their kids. So I just wanted to say that.
This is a perfect example of the partnership that's moving. You know, we wanna see more things like that, I believe. But I'm gonna turn it over, I'll try to turn it over, to Superintendent Patricia DeBoer to give us some of that what's currently going on.
And I think mine's gonna overlap a little bit with Natana. But I just wanna, first of all, say how grateful I am for the opportunity we had tonight. I love seeing your beautiful building. And what I was telling the chairman was, at least with our tour guide, which was Francie, I believe?
Francie.
Just the warmth of that, how this is a building, but it's so much more than a building, and how everything in it is geared to support the people. It just really has a really positive family feel to it. So I'm glad I got to share a little bit in that tonight. So I just wanna share, we currently have one hundred and forty-eight students who've identified as Native and may lie on what our parents provide us. So that's about a nine percent of our current population as of now. We do have our Indian Education Grant, which this year for FY18 was fifty thousand eight fifty-one. It's not a lot. It is based on the number of students we report, so that having those federal form 506s complete is very important. Most of that does go to salary personnel. We do have a coordinator, and she also serves as an after-school instructional assistant and cultural enrichment person at the middle high school. We have a school day tutor at the Quashnet School and a school day tutor at the Coombs School. They do about thirteen hours a week. And then there's an after-school tutor, three days a week for two hours at the middle high school level. And then there's various other items that the grant is used for. But we are grateful for that, and I do enjoy my parent committee meetings with Winnie.
Thank you.
So the principals shared a little bit about what's going on in each of their schools. And like I said, it probably overlaps a little bit with Natana and what I said about the Indian Education Grant. We have the tutoring at the middle high school, three days a week, with George Spivey, who is a retired principal. At the graduation, we're always gifted and grateful to have the Red Hawk Singers do their drumming performance. And also the addition of the Wampanoag Prayer that is now read. I think it's been two or three years that that's been happening. Makes our graduation extremely special. Principal Balistrachi shared that the Wampanoag Tribe has conducted smudging ceremonies at MMHS and with students and administration. We're very happy about the language class that we are partnering with to provide. And we do have seven students enrolled in that. And I do love the way that it really is a way to honor their culture and heritage. We have been working closely with John Hanlon and also Carla Riley on several of the field trips that they facilitated. I know the trip to Harvard last year, I believe, was pretty special. We have, in the past, had a native peer mentoring program, which, under my list of next steps, is something we need to perk up. And we've had guest speakers who have addressed the faculty. At the Quashnet School, they have the school day tutoring, the lunch bunches that Natana mentioned, which they did have lunch bunches before. I don't know if it had the language piece that the Cooms.
It did.
It did. In grade three, we, is a Wampanoag Culture and History Study. It's part of the Massachusetts Curriculum. Um, in grade three, we, is a Wampanoag Culture and History Study. It's part of the Massachusetts curriculum. They always go to Plymouth Plantation, and they do the one-room schoolhouse, which also includes the Wampanoag Museum. Um, grade five last year had a Wampanoag Day, which is tentatively scheduled this year for March third of two thousand eighteen. And that sort of, um, came about through Marlene Perry, correct? But what we liked about that, and what we hope to sort of grow that, it was really a way for our students, our native students, to teach their teachers and their peers, and, um, really demonstrate and show off their culture. So that's something we really want to build on. Grade six does a trip to the Museum of Fine Arts and the American History Wing, which has exhibits, um, related to the Wampanoag. Um, we do emphasize on a regular basis, on an annual bas- basis, about being culturally sensitive around Columbus Day Thanksgiving, making sure that the right messages are delivered to the, to the students, and really celebrating diversity. At the Coom School, which is pre-K to two, um, the lunch bunches, the school day tutoring. What Principal LaBelle said happens a lot of times at that school is there'll be Native American parents who come in and share in their child's classroom, so we really need to broaden that. Because if you don't happen to have that, then that, those other students are missing out on that opportunity. Um, there's Wampanoag cultural poetry that's displayed in the spring. I think that is related to the, um, school day tutoring. And then Carla Riley has organized some field trips for our native students. But the bigger piece is what we're gonna do after this great meeting. And, um, you know, for me, it's all about positive relationships and communication, and making sure that we're respectful and clear and inclusive, so, um, because nothing's gonna happen if those foundation pieces aren't in place. So what we'd like to have is our district leadership team, which is the principals, myself, Hope. And by the way, this is Hope Hanskem, our assistant superintendent. Um, she's just not, just sitting here next to me.
I would just sit next to you. I'd be happy to do that.
Anyway, um, so we really want to have a, that team meeting with someone, or a designated team from the, the tribe on a regular basis, so we can develop a plan. The first step is that kind of a meeting, and then develop a pretty detailed plan. We would like the district-based leadership team to meet monthly with the education department of the tribe. I guess in the past, something like that had taken place, but we need to make sure that's happening. Um, we need to have a go-to person at the tribe. I am the go-to person for the school, so I need one person that then knows how to distribute something among the tribe. And then if you come to me, I know who to get everything out to or get the information from. We'd like to bring back the grade-five clam bake, which was part of, you know, schooling for a long time. I don't know how it kind of, maybe you, anyway, that will be on our plan. That is not my area of expertise, but it will be on the plan.
Can we make that happen this year? Cause Sam's in fifth grade.
Well, we get our first meeting, we get our plan, we'll get the dates.
If it's in a month, we can call, we can make that.
I see two people in charge of the clam bake. Definitely wanting to expand, expand cultural assemblies for our students and staff on a regular basis, and including the, the piece that Natanaa was talking about, opportunities for snippets of PD that come in, or longer, you know, a more lengthy PD, uh, tribal presentations offered by native parents. We need to sort of pool a, a group of individuals who say, "I would love to share about this," or "I would love to share about this," just like we do with most of our parents, but trying to get, um, the native, uh, parents to share. Continuing to work on building respect and awareness of the Wampanoag culture, particularly like at the pre-K to two building, that was something Principal LaBelle talked about, where, you know, a, a child might not realize why a long braid is significant to a Wampanoag student. So just those little mini lessons, that could really be beneficial. Principal Balasrachi would like to see us bring back the Native American History Class at MMHS, which apparently was there a while ago. Um, my vision would be that that would be co-taught with someone from the tribe and involve guest speakers, so that's definitely a doable. We would like to add the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe as a school committee agenda item. One, we have two meetings a month. You don't have to come to two, but maybe one. And then you would decide, is it, you know, is it an Indian, Indian Ed parent committee time to share? Or is it the language department, or is it the education department, or whatever? You would know you have a spot on our agenda. And each school has a school council, so the principals will try to encourage native participation on their councils, at least representation, which would be great. And then we'd like to get going a really robust Native American peer mentoring program, and not at the, not just at seven through twelve, but I need to see it system-wide, so our oldest can come down and, and really nurture our, our younger students. And, um, so we just want to end like as, from the council, if there's something that you would like to see us do that we're not doing, something that we're not doing, you know, right, or any, any kind of feedback of ways to improve, you know, we're looking for that. And if this isn't the venue, maybe our first co-meeting when we're planning our, um, future, um, partnership, that could be something that comes out then. But we welcome any suggestions.
Thank you.
Pretty much hit it.
We don't see our council speechless that often.
It's not speechless.
Thank you, everyone. Um, as I introduce myself, my name is Charlotte Fry Cromwell, and, uh, tribal council, and I'm also the education liaison. And I also worked, uh, for five years in the Indian Education Program. And I know a lot of the teachers, specifically Mary Kay, um, and when we talked about the clam bake, because she was part of it, a, a big key part of it with myself, so we did that for the five years. And I'm glad to hear that that's going to be coming back. Also, um, just as some, some input on, you know, um, when we talked about the, uh, history of Mashpee, and I was just thinking, what came to mind was the school policy book. Um, for, you know, like when new students come to the community and they come in the system, is there any way that you can insert some, um, information around the tribe? That, that would be a, a good start, but I just have thought about that.
And Councilman, you were saying we should just have another meeting?
Yeah, just, I'm Rob Dyess, Mashpee Wampanoag Councilman, but, um, just wanted to say that it's, it really is an honor to have you guys here. Uh, I think that we should continue having meetings, that we can bounce ideas off of one another. Uh, our, our ideas are one way, you guys come in with a different view, mash them all together, and it kind of makes a good mix. Uh, so I'd be up to meeting with you guys whenever you guys want to set something up. Sure Cedric or Francie can take care of, uh, figuring out meeting times. But I think that'd be a great opportunity for both of us.
Right.
Hi, um, I've been working with Patty, with Ann Carla, with, um, our Indian Education Grant. And we had some leftover funds last year, and what we did was we bought some of the local Wampanoag, um, books from our own people, and we're putting it in the Indian Education Room. And we was gonna try to get some more dollars so we could put it in the school library, but instead of taking from our funds, maybe you guys have a little more money? Maybe you guys can put our native, um, history books in your school libraries, so that kids could take a little, a lot of photos and pass it on. Thank you.
I, I do have one more thing too, that, and it's based on what Natanaa had mentioned, as far as like, you know, um, having more professional services, um, professional development. And not o- you know, not only just the educational, but the social service aspect of it, because of just the way that, you know, life is going for a lot of folks. I know when I was working the school, it was, um, it was a big part of, um, you know, meeting about the students, you know, and the support that the tribe has, um, you know, in those areas and also the schools. So I think it's, it would be important to, um, kind of connect that. And where I'm the liaison of the Health and Human Services, it, it's just, it's really key that we, we connect in that manner. Um, so I'd like to see that happen moving forward, on, on a more regular basis, opposed to, you know, like a once-a-month professional development training or something like that. But I think because of the, uh, the nature of it, and, and what we're dealing with today with our, with our children, it, it should be more often than not, so I'd like to see that happen.
And I think if there's any way, I know we could have, you know, some of you come to speak with our teachers, but if they can ever also come here for a PD, where they make that connection, because it's pretty powerful to be in this building, and I think it would do a lot to break down some misconceptions that, you know, I think it would, not that you have to bring the whole group, but maybe you might focus for, you know...
Right, and I'm thinking that even, you know, the teachers are fine, but like with the counselors that you have.
Oh, counselors, absolutely.
So without, without counselors, counselors.
Just like you say, Mr. Boyd was, uh, and going on in the town center about coming to different events. It was such a pleasure to see you at the Pow Wow, uh, just making connections with our tribal kids. I don't, I don't believe there's been too many superintendents to come to our Pow Wow, and that was pretty powerful for my kids. I have three kids still left in the c- school system, two that are left to school system. And also having that, uh, allowing us to come and do a presentation at the Quashan School. I would like to see that to keep going, even if it got to the high school, because not only was it, um, important for awareness for the non-travel kids, it also was a self-esteem builder for the tribal kids to, it's, you know, it's proud, you can be proud to be Wampanoag and have, and have breeds, and so that was, I, I appreciate that very much. I want, thank you for that.
Anyone else on this side of the table? Um, Nicole, I'll start with you, if you have any comments.
Well, I have one specific question, um, because I thought that, uh, we had some ideas about how to share Jessie's sketch. Did you want to talk about that?
Yes, so what we were hoping, if we can set up at each school where Jessie could come, and, so we have a lot of Monday staff meetings, but it, you could go to each school and really share, because you're pretty powerful with that message, and, and I mean, it's sort of just kind of the right length, but hits everything. And I think you being there to sort of share it, not, I don't want to just hand it to them and have them read it. It comes to life through you, so that would be really important to have you share it with us.
Sure, I mean, I, um, over the very few years of my adult life, I'm... I've, um, I've, uh, been to, uh, many Mashpee, um, classrooms over the years, and my oldest is thirty-four, and he went through Mashpee School System, but, um, I would be happy, um, to come in, um, if there's a request, um, from a teacher. I don't get so excited when I get requests in November around Thanksgiving. Um, it's, um, it happens a lot. But, um, but I would be happy to, I mean, because it's just a sketch that can be handed out to the public. There are parts of this that are not appropriate for first grade, or second grade, or kindergarten, or... But there are certainly ways to tailor what's in this, um, to be age-appropriate, and there are any number of people in this community that could also do that. As, um, Councilwoman Hendricks just said, you know, there are, um, presentations that can be made that are, um, sort of age-appropriate and culturally appropriate, but history-specific, if the teachers, um, want to have professional development, or if they want me to come into the classroom at the high school level, middle school level, and talk about some of this, and, um, allow the students to ask some questions, um, so that, um, there's real learning and sharing that takes place with an exchange of information and ideas. I think that, um, that would be in the tribe's, um, best interest and in the town's best interest, and I would be happy to help with that.
Great, thank you.
Um, so I appreciate all your next steps and just everything, um, that's been said. I, I just looked down the list and go, yes, um, as far as I'm concerned. And, um, while I'm on the school committee, I will see that there's follow-up and that this, my idea, and what we said, Trish, is that I was trying to make the partnership between the tribe and the school district less opportunistic, more just part of the way we do business. And I, you know, my kids are in third and fifth grade, and I want them to grow up in this community knowing how significant and unique it is in this world, not just in Massachusetts. And I'm just so thrilled that they're young, and that we're doing work now that, that they're gonna reap the benefits from. So you have my hundred percent commitment, and, um, as you can see, we've got rock stars all around the table, so it'll get done.
George, you have anything?
Oh, sure, thank you. First of all, just like to thank us, I thank all of you, I'm sorry, for the opportunity to be here this evening, in particular to Trish and Nicole for the work that you have done in, uh, setting this evening up and the agenda and the rest of it. One thing that I'm particularly interested in is addiction education, and if there's anything we can do, uh, from the school department, as far as that is, particularly with the tribe, it's all over the town. But, but if there's something we can do, we'd be more than happy to. We do have a, uh, in-plane site exhibit, uh, which is coming, and make sure you know about it. It's a room set up, uh, like a teenager's room, and you can go through it, and there's some six, seventy articles in there that might indicate that your child is having a problem with, uh, alcohol or drugs. And some of them, to me anyway, were a real surprise, and we'll be doing that again. And, uh, you know, certainly take advantage of any of that that we have to offer. Delighted to have you.
Could I wonder about whether that, it's set up sort of, um, we've done it at the high school, we've done it at the library, but could we do it in this setting?
Oh, yeah.
Where it would be open to, maybe it would get more people that, from, from everyone. It would be a way to welcome others in, but kids can't go in it because it's, gives them clues.
Gives them ideas.
But it might be a nice place to change it up and see if we could make a difference.
We should definitely have that conversation, because a lot of organizations come through the building, um, use the building for various meetings, um, so public comes a lot, as well as the community, tribal community. Might be something we might have a conversation about.
Okay, sure. Thank you. Jeff?
It probably didn't need to be said, but I'll say it again, so thank you very much for allowing us to come in, um, to this beautiful building. And I wanted to echo what Patty said too, that the home feel and the, you know, the fellowship feel in here. It's something that you don't get sitting in the Quashan Library, so it's kind of... Dude, there's nothing against Quashan Library.
Ouch.
Yeah, well, it's, it was me, not the first time I've had a room I put for my mouth. Um, one, one big thing for me, and, um, I, I take the, the job, I, I know people can scoff at, at, you know, civic duties and stuff like that, but I take it very, very seriously, and, um, I'm a, a previous military member, and I moved, I think, eighteen times in twenty-seven years, and this is the first time that I've grown roots in any, in any place. And this is the longest I've been in one spot in my entire adult life, so I've been here for nine years. So I, I'm, I'm, I'm extremely serious about making Mashpee a better place, and I think that this is a huge step in the right direction, and one of the reasons why I got on the board in the first place. And one thing I'm big at, uh, is managing expectations and communication, so those are my two big things. So at any time, you know, I think one thing that we can do as a, as a group, especially sitting on this table, is to ensure that what you expect our responsibilities are, and what we expect your responsibilities to be, are, we, we understand those. And, um, that's why the communication's so important, and if you see me on the street and you have a complaint, and, again, that's my job, tell me you have a problem. Um, all of our emails are open, um, you can call me on the phone, you can do whatever you want. I am a hundred percent open to making, um, the district the best, um, it can be, and the town the best it can be, so, so thank you very much.
Not to add that your wife is one of our greatest teammates.
I do not disagree.
Chris?
Uh, very, I mean, Jeff said it very well with a lot of the, you know, communication pieces, and, and you know, how serious we actually do take this disposition. I can, I, I would like to think I could speak for the whole committee after working with them for this long, and, um, every last one of us is dedicated to the job that we do, and, you know, can't say enough of how much the district and, and the town and the kids mean to us. That being said, I mean, I like to think of myself as an observer and I'm sitting back, you know, sitting around looking at what's going on here, and after three and a half years on the committee, um, seeing how the things started, uh, three, three and a half years ago, and what I stepped into and how far we've come, and all the changes that happened in the district, and, you know, now we're sitting here, you know? If you'd asked me three, three and a half years ago when I first sat on the committee, would this be happening in this manner, or in this, in this style, in this collaboration? I don't know that I would have been able to say yes, but the leadership that we have in place, especially with Patty, and the, uh, the principals is, is outstanding. And, you know, thank you very much for, you know, having us here. It's a, it's a great building and, uh, wonderful people, so, thank you.
I guess I saved the worst for last.
Private joke.
I do want to thank you, um, uh, each and every one of you for inviting us to come here. I view this as maybe the first time, but it better not be, um, the last time. And I would hope that, um, you, you would be willing to have us come back, and I would hope that, um, many would, uh, strongly want to come back, uh, and have another meeting, uh, with you. I think it's that important. I think it's that important for us to, he's sitting across the table and having constructive dialogue. And, you know, and part of this is, you know, the school committee trying to increase public awareness of what, you know, we're trying to do. Because I think we all agree that the most important thing is our children. And ensuring that they have the best possible education possible, whether it's here, there, or wherever. But, you know, we're all contributing to that endeavor. And so, you know, as a collective group, we can accomplish miracles in my mind. And so I know this, the number of things have been outlined here as far as next steps. And, you know, I want to see this committee help ensure that those things are being actively worked on. And, you know, one of our few tasks that we have, or responsibilities that we have as a school committee, is, you know, we're going to ask one person at the school, which is the superintendent. And so ensuring that these things, you know, are being given due cause and that they are being followed up on, I think is important. And it's something that we will be monitoring on an ongoing basis from that perspective. Then each individually, as we pointed out here, you know, have an individual responsibility to continue to build that relationship. It's not just when we're in meetings, but every day we want to be building that relationship. And, you know, I think Jeff pointed out, if you have a problem or a concern, an idea, reach out to us. You know, we're here, that's, you know, part of our job as being on the school committee is to serve everyone in the community. We've definitely taken bad things in the past as well as good things. And we continue to strive to improve in everything that we try to do. So, you know, reach out to us, let's have those dialogues, let's continue this process. I look forward to this committee working with you going forward. And, you know, I would definitely like to see us be able to come back and do this again in the future.
Absolutely.
I'd love to help you.
And thanks for bringing our numbers up. Record attendance at a school committee.
It was the oysters.
Thank, thank you very much. Nothing else on that topic. I am going to move to the next piece, which is the principals. Talk to us about the start of the new year. I can't believe that we're already into October already. So I will turn it over, I'm not sure who's going first.
Right here, next to me. They'll take turns.
Nope, they take turns.
Good evening, my name is Mark Bell Strachey. I'm the principal of National High School. We get to meet earlier. So on behalf of the chairman and school committee, I want to thank you for hosting this meeting and Chairman Cromwell, members of the tribal council. This is something, it's a great honor for me to be able to address this group and this room, historic day to have this type of meeting. So thank you for bringing it all together and thank you for the opportunity. Really just to kind of give you just an overview, brief overview of our first month. It's hard to believe, it feels like we just blinked and September was gone. But I will say with, with great confidence, it was one of the better starts to a school year that we've had in Mashpee. This is my twelfth year in the district. I had the great pleasure of being a teacher and a coach and coached a lot of your children and taught a lot of your children and had great relationships with them. But now to be the leader of the school, it's an opportunity for me to continue to grow it and really make it, and all of our kids, the best versions of themselves. So it's been a really great start to the year. Our academic programming is fully underway. Do want to publicly recognize Dr. Green Deer, Melanie Roderick, Carla Riley, Jen Weston, and all of the efforts of forth to bring Wampanoag language to our school. I'm thrilled to be able to offer it and so far the feedback has been outstanding. We continue to collaborate and work out different kinks and little things. But we're excited to offer that. Mashpee is such a unique place and to be able to bring that into our school adds tremendous cultural value. And as Jessie had mentioned earlier, to be able to have that experience for our native children is something that's invaluable. So I'm excited to be able to be a partner with that and to offer it at the high school. We do offer a language credit for it at the local level. So I will grant every student that participates this year in the class a full year language credit. And we'll continue to do so and hopefully we continue to grow that program. So it's one of the great exciting things for our academic piece. Our students right now are starting to apply to college, our seniors. Over fifty percent this year have already applied early action to one of their top schools. And we work with each and every senior to make sure that they have all the resources and supports in order to get that process taken care of. Right now going on, some, this is our MEEFA and financial aid night at the high school. So we have our counselors and our director of admissions and financial aid at Mass Maritime Academy coming out and working with our families just to educate them. And we offer that to all levels, not just seniors and juniors, but anybody who's planning for higher education for their children. So a lot of the academic pieces are moving. Our clubs and activities are up and running. Every one of them has now had their first meeting. We have over twenty-five clubs and extracurricular activities open to students from grade seven through twelve. We encourage all of our kids to get involved in those. And this year at our open house, which I'll talk about briefly in a moment, we were able to have tables set up throughout the cafeteria for all the different clubs. So membership and participation has increased as a result of parents and students knowing more. And to Mr. Gorman's point about communication, that's something that we're continuing to work better on and make sure that everything is communicated clearly to everyone. Fall athletics, everybody seems to follow those in the newspaper. Our fall athletics are off to a huge start. Our football team is ranked nineteenth in the Commonwealth via the Boston Herald. They're four and oh. Our golf team continues its streak of greatness, they're six and one. Our field hockey team is off to a six, one and one start. And all of our fall sports teams are really competing at a high level. And the great thing to see, you know, when I go out to games and then being a former coach in Mashpee, it brings me a lot of joy to see our student athletes performing and representing our community as well as the tribal community each and every time they put on those jerseys and uniforms. So we're excited about that. Our open house, as mentioned earlier by Celia in her address this, this evening, we had a record attendance at our open house this year. And that's something that we want to continue to grow is parental engagement. Oftentimes we see a lot of engagement up in the preschool and really pre-K to six model. We want to really foster more and more engagement at the seven through twelve level, especially at the nine through twelve level. A lot of times as kids get into high school, you know, parents kind of gradually release them a little bit. But that's the time where the involvement is, is important as ever. So we encourage that. We had a coffee house that raised over five hundred dollars for hurricane relief that evening. And it was a great kind of event to have simultaneously with the open houses. It brought a lot more in, folks in for a number of different reasons. Just to kind of, to finish up here, we do have some upcoming dates. One I think is vitally important, and that's October eleventh. On October eleventh, National Middle High School administer the PSAT free of charge to every single grade ten and eleven student. That's something that is supported by our superintendent, assistant superintendent, and led by Lindsay Kett, who is at our financial aid night this evening. She's a director of guidance and call on career readiness. And to have that opportunity for our students to get access to that, to get exposure to the SAT, and to also have opportunities for AP potential and as Celia so far, to potentially get merit scholarships based on those scores. So that's a really big date coming up. And then on October eighteenth is the All Kid College Fairytale at Barnstable High School. I know, you know, Dr. Green Deer, if you want to maybe reach out to them, that may be a great opportunity to have a table set there. We have one in the spring at the, at Mashpee High School, which we did have a table set up last year. And then lastly, on October twenty-sixth, we have our Fall Coffee House. And this is something that's an opportunity for students to share all of their talents. So we encourage everyone to get involved in that. And that can be adults too. And it's just performances and bringing people together for a good cause and a good night. So that's kind of the quick update for the year. I'm excited for our standardized test scores to come out to the public in the next couple of weeks. I think you'd be very pleased with where the high school is moving and the direction it's going in. And I can't thank our superintendent enough for her leadership and support to do our job in making our schools better. So I want to thank you for this opportunity. And I'll open up to any questions you may have or I'll go to the next vice principal.
I, I do have one request that I know, I really didn't come prepared to be sitting at the meeting. I was kind of thinking if you guys would meet. But if you could forward us those, the dates that you have. I'm sure Trish could get it out, e-blast it to the tribal community.
Absolutely.
Because there may be people that could benefit from that as well.
Absolutely.
And that goes for all principals that have dates, events, ideas that you would like to get to us.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Can I just say, slightly connected to that, I send a Friday email. So if you're a parent, you get it. But I would love to include people who are not parents as well, so that they know what's going on. So if there's a way for you to share emails, if you're not the parent in the Mashpee schools, I would love to include you on that Friday email.
Thank you. Again, thank you for this opportunity, I appreciate it.
I'm sorry, I don't know if I'm allowed to say one quick. Well, Coach, Coach Principal Bell Strachey, on one of our previous visits, we talked about the potential of maybe hosting a home Mashpee basketball game potentially here. So. Is whatever, you know, we need to do to. Would that feel free, I mean, if I can assist in any way or we, whatever we need to do, that would be another first.
Absolutely. And I thought our director, Trevery, who's, you know, you know very well. We've talked about that throughout the fall here, so hopefully they'll be in touch and we'll be able to get that going. That'd be a great opportunity. Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Well, it's always so nice to come after Principal Bell Strachey. But thank you very much for welcoming us here tonight. It is really quite an honor. Living in Mashpee for almost thirty years, raising my son here in Mashpee. And it's just a special place. And we always say it is great to be in Mashpee, but it truly is. And I am just thrilled and honored to be here and representing the Quasnet School as well. So thank you so much. And even our library is not really welcoming. I hope when you do come to Quasnet, you might feel welcome. Because we truly believe, I believe, Mrs. Abchess, my assistant principal, do believe that it is a community school, it's your school, it's our children's school. It's not our school, it's everyone. So please, I hope you do feel very welcome. And it's going to look very good because we, we're so excited to have, received the funding for our new construction project that's going on. It is moving forward, however, a little bit slower than I would like, but it is moving along. So all of those students that have gone through the Quasnet School, we will have new windows, we'll have new exterior doors, we're putting on a new roof, in a whole new EFS system, which is all of the stucco that's around that school. So it's really going to be terrific. And it's just, people come to our school all the time and say, I went to middle school here. All of our parents. And it still looks the same. And it's like, well, it won't soon and we won't have leaks. We are proud of our students, we want to be proud of our, our buildings too. So we appreciate that support so much. Lot goes on at Quasnet School this summer. We had twenty-nine students withdraw from school, but we had thirty-four new students enroll. So we were very busy with the turnover with our students. One of those other community support pieces that we're very proud of is the new playground. And if you haven't been by the back of our school, come and see it. Our kids are loving it. And again, that was community preservation funds that were brought to us from Catherine Laurent, the director of the DPW. And it's just really added to, to the school in general. And the kids are really, really enjoying that. We had our open house that was very well attended on September fourteenth, which was followed by a PTO back-to-school barbecue. And it was so wonderful. Between Coombs School and the Quasnet School, we had about eight hundred people attend. It is just a fabulous, fabulous night. So I highly encourage you, if you have never come to the barbecue, come. It is just such a community feel. And everyone, everyone's there, right, Rob?
I was there.
It's the place to be. It really is. And we appreciate our PTO, but all of our parents who come to support that. And so it is fabulous. One of the other things we're very proud of at the Quasnet School that last year we started an initiative to raise funds for a service dog. And kids were really learning that idea of paying it forward. So we believe in the Falcon Five, which is be safe, respectful, responsible, ready and caring. And they earn right choice tickets for this. And so the initiative was really to have those kids take those right choice tickets and pay it forward to someone else. And we had community sponsors and who gave money in exchange for those tickets. So we raised fourteen thousand dollars. So we're very excited that we were able to purchase a service dog for a local veteran. And it's that whole idea of giving and that community piece, that's the character-building piece of our school that we really, really value. Another piece that academically that, that we're very proud of is we have completed all of our benchmark assessments, where students take online assessments through our one-to-one technology program. Thank you very much for that support. So every one of our students does have a Prone book and they take these benchmark assessments. We know exactly what they need. So we can give them what, what they need in their learning and really tailor it to them. And we do that through our WIN groups, which is a what I need group in reading, where the students go to small group instruction. And it, it started the beginning of this month. Kids are excited about doing it. Teachers love the idea mostly, but it is getting kids in small group to really target those skills that are necessary for each of them. It could be remediation, interventions, or it can be enrichment. It's for every student, every type of learner. So that's been going along really well, we're happy to get that up and running. And I think one of the things that makes Mashpee so great is what we offer our kids. We have about sixteen after-school clubs. We have an intramural program for fifth and sixth graders. We're in our second week. And in the clubs alone, we have approximately a hundred and sixty-five students participating in that. But it's all free. It's free for every one of our students. And thank you to the school committee and to Superintendent DeBoer for that support for our kids. So we are moving along swimmingly right now at Quasnet. It's been a very nice start to the year. It's been fabulous, so. Does anyone have questions about Quasnet? So come and visit us anytime. We do have a beautiful garden too. So when I was hearing you talk about the school and what you, what you do with the children, our fifth grade curriculum really includes a lot of life science. So they have a terrific garden. And I'm thrilled to see Cheryl tonight, so we can get that clam bake up. It's one of our best field trips. So thank you very much.
And I think the library is fantastic. Let's go on for more.
You said ahead of time when you were going to say something that you were going to regret.
Good evening, Paula Bell, principal of the Casey Coombs School. And it is, it's always a pleasure to follow the middle child of our principal. Because it's the youngest one who tries to get away with everything. I'm beginning my second year at the Casey Coombs School as the educational leader there. And the second year is a lot easier. You're in that learning mode that first year. But we had a real wonderful start to the Casey Coombs School, the home of our littlest Falcons. And being in, what am I called? A mainlander, coming from the other side of the bridge each day. It is, I'm grateful every day to make the trip. It's because I'm coming to a wonderful place. It is for me my dream job. It is a community that I've grown to love very quickly. And coming from, I'm from Dartmouth, born and raised. And I had a great friend, still a great friend, with Wampanoag heritage. And it was my relationship with him, and he was so proud of his heritage. And it kind of helped shape my views moving forward. So to land here and to be able to share that. And I also feel it's kind of my responsibility, because I do have the youngest children of our community, to help them shape their views and appreciation for diversity, so. Being almost thirty years in education, myself, as I said, this is, this is my culminating. Being almost thirty years in education, myself, as I said, this is, this is my culminating, I don't want to say my final act. That's not the right choice, but I, I don't plan on going anywhere else until that day I call retirement, and it's an honor to be here, professionally and personally. So, our beginning of the year, as I said, we got off to a great start, we started off with some district professional development before our children came. But we were very lucky to have one day to ourselves at our school, where we spent a lot of time rotating through different, different learning opportunities. Integrating technology, learning some of our new data management systems, and really kind of sharing and talking about the instructional practices in our classroom that we wanted to get better at. We also spent some time, what we were going to do purposefully to help build the culture of our school. And this part of diversity and appreciating our community was a big part of that. We focused on a book called Only One You, if you, if you know that story. And if you come out to the front of our school, you might see some colored rocks gathering in our garden. So each child has taken a rock and painted it in their, their own way. Some of them have sayings on them, preschool students were just happy to put the, the letter of their name on them. Grateful to the teachers that followed us down to the casket to collect all those rocks and bring them back. And I think I drove them around for a week in the back of my truck, so. But it was great to see that type of collaboration with our, with our students and staff. We also, school-wide, read the DOT book, if you know, September fifteenth is DOT Day, and that's another great story about being unique. And we shared that story throughout our school, and we kind of celebrated it in many different ways on that day, through art and stories and writing. We also were able to welcome back a lot of staff members, and some that joined us after the first of the year last year. But we also were able to welcome a handful of new staff members, and one I will point out tonight, Mr. Scott Shepherd, who came to us in the eleventh hour of opening our school, and I just wish I really had the whole summer for us to collaborate, because he is my brother from another mother. We are alike in so many ways, but more importantly, the thing we share is passion for, for children. And we spend a lot of time, our mornings start every morning, our talks are about kids and what we're going to do that day. And I think another thing I'd like to say is that he brings an expertise to the job that, that I can't bring in connection to, you know, to this town, and I'm just very, very grateful to have him by my side. We also did a little restructuring, I think I also wanted to add to that, both of our, our mothers were in education, his mom was a principal, and my mom taught seventh grade English for forty-two years, and we both grew up in the same, that same area of Massachusetts. So I scared him in the interview when I said, are you, do you know Guy Shepherd? That's my brother, and how do you know that? So, but we did do some restructuring, we found out that our kindergarten numbers were rising, and we were able to restructure our staff to offer another kindergarten session, to keep our numbers at a reasonable rate around eighteen. We too, at the Coombs School, celebrate the Falcon Five, of being respectful, responsible, safe, caring, and ready to learn. And I think last year was, we had some bear last year.
Coco.
Coco. And I'm like, well, we're all Falcons at the other schools, why are we not Falcons at Casey Coombs? So we became Falcons, Coco was retired. So we now too have the Falcon Five. And just as they have choice, Good Choice tickets at the Quashnet School, we have Falcon Eggs. And right now what we're doing is we, we collect them collectively, so students can earn them for showing appropriate behavior in certain areas, and they put them in our Falcon Nest, so it doesn't matter whether you put one Falcon Egg in, or ten Falcon Eggs. When it's finally full, we have a whole school celebration, something to celebrate, and everyone gets to share in that. So we're, we're excited to be able to, to continue that this year, and there were many kids, as soon as they got through the front door, they wanted to know, we'll be still doing Falcon Eggs, as we are. Our open house was, was also very successful, we did a little shift with our open house this year. Two major things, one is children never really attended the Coombs School open house, and feeling that it's really their open house, we should invite them. So we did, and the, in order to accommodate that, we kind of staggered the families coming, based on letters of the alphabet and their last name. And it, I was a little nervous about how it would work, but I think it was a great night, there was a nice flow through the evening. We also encouraged our staff to, to try something different, instead of just to stand and deliver like you would get at a college class with a syllabus and what you're going to be doing. They really engaged them in activities, or the child led them through an activity. And I told the students that it was their job to introduce their teacher to their parents, and they did a great job. And they also had a little passport where they had to go around and visit the different areas of the school, which might not normally be visited. So we felt like every staff member, you know, was, was, was visited, and it was a great, great evening. The other thing that we have weathered, and I say weathered because on the first day of kindergarten, we had this torrential downpour, which was the day we were introducing our new pickup and drop-off. So if you can survive anything with kindergarteners, it's going to be okay. So we did change our system, it's become very productive, we had a few speed bumps along the way, no pun intended, but we've got it into a place where, where we're feeling the security of the school, the security of children is paramount, and we're getting kids onto our campus and off the campus in a, a safe and efficient way. And we have, our parent pickup is, it's really a door-to-door service. So at the end of the day, you drive up, we bring your child right to your car, which is great, and you're going to really like it in the wintertime, where you don't have to get out. But that's moving very smoothly. What's that?
We've gotten down to a science.
We've gotten down to a science.
Seven minutes now.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, there are some people hold up signs and tell us how well we're doing, so. So we too have, we're in the second year of our before and after-school activities. We had a scattering of offerings last year, but we, we doubled our offerings this year, we have about a hundred children participating. Some of them were so full that we had, we've already filled sessions for the second part of the year. Cheerleading is our, our biggest. It is great, and we're going to give them lots of opportunities to show their skills at lunch and whatnot, so. And upcoming events, we have Fire Prevention Month is October, and one of our partnerships that we've gotten even closer to is our Mashpee Fire Department. It's just a stone's throw away from where we are. So our kindergarteners will be going up for fire station visits, and get to pick up a hose and climb on a fire truck. Where our grade-one students will actually have fire prevention classes from fire department representatives actually in our classrooms at Casey Coombs. Thank you again for, I know you've heard that several times tonight, but it is really an honor to be here. I've driven by this building so many times, and have wondered what it was like inside, and it is very impressive and powerful to be here. So thank you for your hospitality.
You don't care if they have questions?
Do you have any questions?
I do have one comment, I just, I want to thank you, Principal Bell. My grandson is a student there, and to walk in and request a meeting with you, and you know my grandson by name, you know his medical condition, you know about him, it's really nice to pull up in the morning and see you, Scott too, engaged in there to greet children, and there when it's time for them to go home. And I really appreciated the Polka Dot Day, was wonderful. Open House worked great, and the pickup-drop-off is down to seven minutes, we're, we're chugging along.
Doing fine, great.
So I, I just, you're doing a great job over there.
Thank you very much.
As one, one parent, I want to say thank you to the staff there.
Fantastic, thank you.
Aren't you glad I stopped you now?
Paul, I also wanted to say that I, as the newest, you know, member of this just quite excellent team, I'm always really impressed and proud when I get to let other people hear what I get to hear regularly now. But you almost make me want to have another kid. I can't believe I'm down at the Coombs School and you start all this good stuff going on, so congratulations.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, and you've been very supportive as well, and I appreciate that.
But it's just, it's wonderful to see.
That statum is approval of minutes for July twelfth.
This is really when the good stuff starts, if you guys.
Did everyone get a copy of the updated July twelfth minutes? There was a typo on the front page.
Do you have a lunch price?
Yes, she fixed it.
If there are no changes, do I have a motion to accept the minutes for July twelfth?
I'll move.
Is that a second?
Second.
Matters for the comments, Nicole, how do you vote?
Yes.
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 And yes, unanimous. Next one is August ninth.
Mr. Chairman, I had a question on this one. Under New Business eleven dot one, I believe I was absent, yeah, for this meeting, and we had a second read. Was it a second read and vote to approve the wellness policy, or was it a second read, approve and a second read?
I believe it was a vote and approval. So it was a second read and approval.
Only, yeah.
Just, yeah. You said second read, but a second read indicates that it would be approved.
I think we noted at that meeting, because you were not there, that it's an open document, that if you had additional changes, that you wanted to put in.
Right.
Yeah, that that wasn't precluded, but we just wanted to get it in the handbook, because the school year was starting.
I, I think behind the, I think behind the table, it's not a big deal, but approve the second read of the wellness policy, to me, the second read that the wellness policy was.
Got it, okay.
Got it, approved, awesome. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
See you again soon.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Since I brought it up, I'll move to approve the minutes of August ninth, two thousand seventeen, is written.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, with edits.
To clarify, with the proof.
Second.
Yeah, you were not present.
You can move.
Oh, you can?
Yeah. Can't vote.
You can't vote, but you can make the vote.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, so I have a motion by Jeff to approve, is that in the second?
Yep.
By George. All right. So we have a motion to approve with edits, to clarify that the policy was approved. Nicole, how do you vote?
Yes.
I'm staying, sorry, I abstained. Yes.
And yes, so three, four, two, three, six.
If I was at the meeting, I probably wouldn't call it that, but I read the minutes because I wasn't there.
Yes, I have a meeting for second of the two to the package.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by George with a second by Jeff to approve the minutes as presented. There is no further discussion, Nicole?
Yes.
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 And yes, unanimous. Moving right along, next is the report of the superintendent.
I don't know if you want to pass, that's the Enterprise article on that, Rob and Jesse. So that's just the, and the article that's going to be in Friday's Mashpee Enterprise, just sharing that. So we have administrative reports, we already had wonderful share-outs from our principals. Coombs School has four hundred and twenty students, this is as of the September report. And just to reemphasize, a thank you to the PTO and the Friendly Falcon for an outstanding family barbecue. And everything else was pretty well mentioned by Principal Bell. We have Principal O'Brien's report for the Quashnet School, she has four hundred and eighty-seven students as of September. And just to acknowledge the new PTO board, congratulations to President Tracy Fisher, Vice President Jennifer Hagan, Treasurer Robert Blackburn, Corresponding Secretary Mark McGlorry, and Recording Secretary Carolyn Savage. And thanking them again for the barbecue. Field trips that are underway at the Quashnet School, grade four, they're grouped under Project Life, it's in conjunction with Greenbrier. And the grade four studies the woodlands and forest, and then they have a trip there. Grade five is the ponds, and grade six is the salt marsh, and those trips have started to take place. And any questions on that? We have Principal Bellstrachi's report for the middle high school, he has seven hundred and forty-two students as of September. He wanted to acknowledge Mike Looney and Sherry Vanitsky for organizing the grade stems, the grade seven STEM field trip to Fenway Park. It was really a wonderful day, it was on September fourteenth, and thank you to the many parents and staff who chaperoned. Thank you to band teacher Andy Torianos for organizing the coffeehouse that Principal Bellstrachi talked about. And we already talked and acknowledged Celia Crefter on her achievement for National Merit Scholarship. And also, Principal Bellstrachi also thanked already Dr. Greendeer, Melanie Broderick, and Jennifer Weston for supporting the language class. And he also wanted to congratulate Morgan Peters, Keon Jackson, and Jaheem Frye for being recognized for their anti-opioid rap titled Flippin'. And thank you for their leadership on this, and I had the pleasure of going in a classroom that Morgan was in, and he handed me his headphones, and I got to listen to it, it was really good. And he told me which one was the verse he wrote, so they did a great job on that, good leaders.
We should have got you on video with that.
I didn't say I was dancing to it. We have the report of our Special Education Director Jamie Curley, and as of her September report, there are two hundred and seventy-four students in the special ed, under the umbrella of special education. And she lists the meetings she attends. We have a report from our Athletic Director Matt Trevary, with some of the, the team scores, which are probably different from now, are doing very well. Some individual highlights, and I know that Carla left, but Mashpee senior Shyla Hendricks had two, three-goal games this season, that's in field hockey. Golf is off to a great start, varsity football, as Principal Bellstrachi said, is ranked very high. And the soccer program has forty-one kids playing at the high school level, which is pretty large. Our biggest challenge is field space, and managing, Rob could attest to this.
I gotta go.
It's a continual concern, but he does a great job of trying to help us manage all of the children who need to be on those fields, so that's, long-term, we have to look at that. Acknowledging that we have a new boy soccer coach, which is Donald Valentine, he's also a history teacher with the district. And last year he coached middle school softball, and also our new boys, cross-country, middle school boys soccer, it says soccer, cross-country, I don't think you can do both. What's Ben Womet?
Soccer.
Cross-country, baseball. Ben Womet is the new cross-country coach, and he is a standout from the Falmouth Track Club, so we're very happy to have him. Okay, personnel reports is much smaller than the last one or the one we were running through the summer. We had a lot of personnel changes, we had people who retired, people who took positions in other districts, and that now that it's sort of settled. At the Coombs School, we have the addition of Sandra Pachico as a paraprofessional, and Shayla Walker as a recess monitor. Shayla is coming, she knows a lot of our kids through the recreation department's before and after-school program. And then departures that are non-retirement, Kirk Souza was a KCC paraprofessional. Sandra took his position, he went to Upper Cape Tech to be a culinary teacher. And Mary Ann Flaherty has retired or resigned from her food service administrative assistant, they are relocating. So we wish them well. Enrollments are on your chart. Four hundred and twenty at the Coombs, like I said, Quasnet four eighty-seven, middle school two seventy-six, high school four sixty-six. The total is sixteen forty-nine. There's still a lot of movement in and out at this time of the year. We have fifty-one students who attend Cape Tech. In May of seventeen, that was fifty-six, so we're down a little bit. And then we still have nineteen students, which is how we left it in May, in out of district placement. Questions? Hearing none?
So, um, I have a question, sorry. I'm just looking at Jamie's, what's the difference between the special education numbers on the state, the system-wide enrollments versus, what's more current? Jamie's report, or?
No. So the, the one that you're looking at on the chart.
Yeah. Says two fifty-one.
Right, that is, that doesn't include the, um, out of districts. And there's a couple of, sort of. So then, yeah, if you, the total of the number includes all of the ones at the schools. It doesn't include, I believe, the home tutored or the other. Let's see, two seventy-four minus nineteen two, yes, it does not, so the number two fifty-one is what's at each school, um, basically, it doesn't include.
Okay, got it, thank you.
I had the same thing, I had to back into that. One thing we're going to add for this summary chart is I want to break the preschool into a preschool and a pre-K. Because we need to distinguish between our threes and fours, so we're going to add that and change up that chart. And, um, in terms of the budget cycle update, we, um, the district did meet the requirement of the town manager to submit, um, a preliminary budget for FY nineteen by September twenty-ninth. And that is not gone through all of the vetting process at the level of the school committee, which will be taking place, and I believe on October twenty-fourth, we will be sharing, um, sort of with the town manager, the back, backup behind all of the numbers. I believe school committee members are attending that, one or two. But we have our next meeting on October eighteenth, we'll have some more discussion on the budget that's been submitted. But it was a budget that was built by, um, obviously, the personnel sort of is an easy piece to, to figure out unless we know of some programming changes. And then the operating budgets are built by the principals predominantly, so. But we have further discussion to have on all of that. Did you want to add anything, George, or?
Uh, the October twenty-fourth meeting, I've already informed town hall that I'm not going to be able to be there, and Nicole only is going to be in my place.
Right.
And I think, um.
To the wolves.
That's what you told me when you asked.
Did I neglect one?
Yeah. One thing I just wanted to say more to the staff is, um, I personally am not happy with, um, the, the current approach where I don't know what you guys asked for that we didn't budget for, because the town already kind of told us what we should be looking at in terms of a total. And I think, uh, that's troubling to me, because as an advocate for the school system, I need to know what we're not getting that we, that you guys think we need. Um, and so we, um, as a group, I think, are going to be working on a sort of out-year budget strategy that allows us to kind of not just look at the current year and next year, but sort of look forward so that, you know, we sort of have a place for things that we can't fund, and that we don't, those don't just fall off the table. Or, and I think it would make it easier on an annual basis to kind of, um, fill gaps when we know what our priorities are. So, is that, I hope that was appropriate to say out loud? Because I just did.
That was funny, that's what I was talking about last night.
Okay.
Yeah, can't take it back, yeah.
Yeah.
What do you mean, I don't?
Yeah, just to reinforce Nicole's point. You know, and this gets back to what we have said, um, throughout this night and many nights before. You know, have communication with, um, this committee, um, whether, you know, at the meeting or outside of the meeting. Because we don't know if something's, if you need something, want something, or something's not working unless you communicate. So, um, we encourage you to have that communication, okay?
Well, I think what we should do too is we, if there are positions that we want, we can build a budget a certain way, and then over here, we're going to have these other items and the justification for them that we would like to be put in there. Maybe that, as the final approach with the town.
Yeah, I want to be given the chance to get you something that you need. So, I, I, that's what I signed up for. So, get my, my flak vest out.
We keep looking at sl.
Nice to see you, Mr. Todd. So good to have you here.
You're going to deal with the Taliban.
Just keep us between us, right?
You didn't say anything wrong.
And the TV, on the paper. That is fine.
It's quiet now.
All right. Calendar events?
Calendar events is in the packet, um, and again, you know, you kind of get that update on Fridays. I don't think I need to go through these. So that completes my report.
All right. Um, next item is, uh, a, a short update in regard to the, uh, Quasnet window roof, door, ADA project, we didn't get it labeled correctly here, right?
Yes, so, yeah, so sadly, we've reached, we've encountered a glitch. We went through all the work of going with the construction manager at risk approach where multiple groups voted, this is what we want. Well, you need at least three people to indicate interest in that, although there were like seven or nine, seven?
Nine.
Nine who indicated interests, in the end, those who put forth documentation and really wanted to go for it were two. And you're not allowed to have two, you have to have three to pick from. So we are back down, but we're going back to a general contractor after all of that. So according to Catherine Laurent today, um, on October twenty-fifth, RFB will be issued, on October twenty-seventh, which actually is changed to the thirtieth now, there'll be a site visit by, um, Raymond Design Associates, I believe, if I'm correct. November fourteenth, filed sub-bids are due, and on November twenty-first, a general contractor bids are due. November twenty-seventh, the, what's the B R S? Board of Selectmen award the contract, yes, that would be the Board of Selectmen award the contract. December first, the contract is signed, uh, the window of December eighteen through the twenty-second is when window shop drawings are due. January one to second is window shop drawings are returned by the RDA, and then April twenty-third, the windows are to be on-site, which is a sixteen-week lead time. So, that's where we're at.
Thank you. Any questions, so?
Is that about a full week, July?
It feels like we, yeah, the whole amount of time we lost trying to go with the construction manager at risk and all the advantages thereof. The loss of time was not one of the things, God, after that.
Yeah.
I wouldn't have gone that way if I knew, I don't know how often they only get two indicated people who are interested. I mean, they should have told us, I guess.
Yeah.
They don't want to come over the bridge, they sound.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions on that? Hearing that, um, under new business, uh, school committee goals, just briefly, the, uh, school committee met, uh, last night for, uh, over two hours, um, trying to, well, working with, uh, the superintendent and the, uh, assistant superintendent, trying to formulate, um, an outline for school committee goals for this year. I think we made some really good progress, and, um, we will be bringing, or, um, bringing those forward, I believe, at the next meeting for further discussion, so. I commend each of my fellow members and our good facilitators who, uh, helped lead the sheep through the process. Last night, so I think we made, uh, good progress. I'm not asking for comments on that. Next item of business is the solar roof project, um, at the Casey Cooms. Superintendent DeBoer, you have a brief update on that.
So I met with Catherine Laurent and a representative from Select, this company, um, that does solar panels. We started with the idea that we'd really like to have the canopy over one of our parking lots, which is more upfront money. But in the end, um, they ended up settling on looking at the Quasnet, I mean, the Coombs roof, not the Quasnet roof, the Coombs School roof.
You're done.
And the, the company came out and, you know, came up with all the plans, but in the end, they're trying to meet a timeline of March thirty-first because some rules are changing with tax credits and all that. But for me, it was very disruptive, it would be very disruptive to the learning, and there's not a lot of time to budget it in. Wasn't going to be a huge savings, like twenty thousand a year, and we can always do, look into that later. So Catherine and I made the decision, we weren't moving forward with that at this time, so.
Okay.
There's information about nothing right now.
Yes, we looked.
Yes, we looked.
All right, any, um, committee reports?
Uh, two quick ones. The finance committee meeting that was scheduled for this evening was rescheduled, uh, for our benefit. The, the school committee could be present, uh, regarding the vocational technical school and the school committees, uh, what the school committee and school department would like to do on that. Patty is going to make a brief blurb, she's not going to be in town, uh, that we're going to have broadcast. Mike Looney's going to be present there, and I'll just speak on behalf of the school department. The wellness committee met today, nothing really to report.
Okay, thank you. When, when is that, uh, the new finance committee day, George, do you recall?
October tenth.
October tenth, okay, thank you. Any other committee, subcommittee reports? Hearing that, any other items, um, that need to be brought forward to the committee for attention tonight? I do know, um, in thinking about, um, the agenda for our next meeting, we will be having a discussion in regard to the, um, upcoming town vote on, uh, the technical school funding. So we'll put that on our agenda, uh, as one item for, uh, next time to, to do, to, for the committee to talk about. Is there any other items, as I, as you think about?
Just waiting with bated breath, just, just can't believe it. Go ahead.
We're in shock.
Yeah.
Any other to you?
We're finishing like an hour.
Potential adjournment.
Wait, don't say it. No, I don't.
Don't say it.
We still have a public conference.
I moved you adjourn.
Now, I have a second.
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 I just. Oh. No, no. Go ahead, did you all say aye?
No, yeah.
No, I was just going to say that, uh, maybe having the meetings here is.
Yes.
They're too comfortable on this.
I voted for Roncar.
Wait, let them vote, let them vote.
Just go ahead.
Did you say comfortable at Quasnet?
I said yes. Too comfortable there.
All right. How do you vote?
Here we go.
Aye.
Aye, yes.
Yes.
Thanks, Joe. Thanks, Joe, people. No, no, no.
So I mean, I think including the, the, the other stuff. Because we don't really have, once he's down. once he's down.